Welcome everyone to the public hearing now on the school board budget. Appreciate everyone in attendance and we're gonna start off with the roll call please. Ms. Sharon?
Mr. Lou?
Here.
Mr. Henigan? Mrs. Hein?
Here.
Mr. Drummond?
Here.
Mr. Harold?
Here.
Ms. Deation?
Here.
Mr. Jeter?
Here.
Mrs. Sealy?
Present.
Mrs. Drocker?
Mr. Bettencourt?
Here.
Mr. Womack? Mr. Hershey?
Here.
Mrs. Moll?
Present.
Mr. Plesane? Mrs. Bell? Sariel?
All right, thank you. Please stand for the invocation and pledge led by Ms. De Nation.
Let us pray. Direct us, O Lord, with your most gracious favor that all our work begun continued and you may find favor in your sight and finally by your mercy may we obtain everlasting life. This we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, sir. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna be getting some comments there regarding our proposed budgets from Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Mr. Lou. Good evening, board members. Tonight, as you know, is the public hearing on our budget. It is time for members of the public to ask questions and make comments. Tonight, I think it also important to remember that our budget is a year-round, day-to-day budget that we constantly review, monitor, and discuss, both as staff as well as from the public. The board's opportunity for discussion on this proposed budget will take place at the September 6th committee as a whole meeting and then final board adoption is scheduled for September 8th. Before we open for public comments, please allow me to share some of the highlights from this year's proposed draft budget. First of all, on the general fund revenue, we are projecting an increase in our velour and property tax collections of 2.1 million based on the latest tax roll provided by the assessor's office. Our sales tax revenue are projected as being the same as last year. Conservative estimate will continue to monitor on a monthly basis and certainly revise if necessary. Our MFP funds are expected to increase by 1.9 million above last year. This increase is due to increases students as of our last February 1st count and a projected growth enrollment growth of 250 students for this school year. House bill number one from last session generated additional funding of $1.2 million and these funds are projected to be used for salaries and benefits. From general fund expenditures, as you know, Mr. Jabby and staff have started a collective bargaining discussion with our federation. These discussions have included the prospect of salary increases and as part of those discussions, tonight's draft budget includes expenditures totaling approximately 5.5 million and proposed employee stipends and highly effective teacher stipends in students, including the associated taxes and benefits. We saw a decrease of 2.1 million in school system retirement contributions due to the reduction in employer contribution rates from our state retirement system. We are projecting an increase of $1 million for new textbooks that must be ordered for this year and transportation costs for equipment purchases and bus lease purchases decreased by 2.3 million since this cost was one-time purchases from last year, including the new radios that are serving us so well early in the school year. As I mentioned at the beginning, our budget is extremely fluid and constantly monitored. Budget updates as required will be provided to the board in December and again in March. Also tonight at your desk, I put a copy of our cost-saving measures for taxpayers press release. Included as well are letters and social media comments from the North Shore Business Council, both the East and West Chambers of Commerce complimenting our staff and our board for, quote, "Your dedication and perseverance in creating college and career readiness for our children while at the same time doing so in a fiscally responsible manner." A special thank you to Terry and her staff for her work in preparing the budget. I thank you to the board as well for your leadership in the creation of this draft budget that I believe we can all support. Look forward to the public comments tonight as well as the board discussion on September 6th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foles. Appreciate that very much. Okay, we now can open for some public input. If someone would like to speak on the budget, please come up to the podium, state your name and so on and be recognized and you can certainly speak from there.
We're ready. Yes, sir. No. No. Gary Leonard, I'm at 675 Kiskate Town, Mandeville, Louisiana. One question I had was vehicle rentals, 133% increase from 2015 budget of 38,000 up to 90,000, difference of $51,400. Wanted to get a, an explanation of that as...
Who'd like, sure. Ms. Prevost, you wanna answer that for?
Yes, our leased vehicles, we signed those contracts in January of last year, so it was only a half a year and this year's a full 12 months.
These were for our maintenance vehicles.
Correct. So we entered a lease program with our maintenance vehicles instead of buying new ones. We're now in a leasing program. It's a year and a half old?
It's, yes, sir. Six months in it, but this new budget's fixed the other year.
Right.
So this previous budget was just for six months? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. The leasing part of it was just for six months and now we're getting a full year's worth of leasing.
Of the utility vehicles.
Right, but you can see our purchase cost of new maintenance trucks will go down because we're not purchasing them anymore, we're leasing them instead.
And what respect does that a cost savings as far as versus buying, I guess is my question?
And I think we ran those numbers, Mr. Jabby. I know you did and met with the companies as well.
Yes, sir, and I don't have the cost savings here, but they projected out was to, this is a five, I think it's a five-year lease, Terry?
That's correct.
A five-year lease and over those five years, it was a projected save as far as, because part of the maintenance and stuff is included in that lease.
But I can, we can get to the exact...
No, that's, that's fine. It just, you said maintenance is included, so that's a...
Yes, sir.
Some maintenance is included, yes.
All right, so that's a good deal. All right, thanks.
And how many maintenance workers do we have, Peter?
We have right at 100 maintenance workers.
So these are the maintenance guys that serve the schools, 100 of them across the parish? Ms. Cindy?
Hi, I'm Cindy Restor, 64328 Fish Hatchery Road, Lecombe, and I had several different questions. When I kinda looked at some different categories here, under special education programs, for example, which is 1210-532000, out of district fees.
Sharon, you wanna answer the special ed questions? Come up to the, you can just sit right there. No, you can, you can sit right there.
Yeah, added district fees might cover transportation as far as having to transport a student to a program that's not available in their district.
Which we're required to do.
That is correct.
By law.
Okay. All right, the next question I had, the virtual academy coordinator who shows a really big increase of 124% for the year?
Yes, Ms., Dr. Sanford?
Yes, last year, our virtual academy coordinator retired half year and so we had a replacement for half the year. This year, we have a full-year person, so last year's budget include a, included a half year salary.
And why don't you explain what the virtual academy coordinator does?
The virtual academy coordinator handles all of our online enrollments. We have some students who are junior high age, some who are high school age. We have students who are homebound enrolled in this program as well as all of our alternative schools and some high school students who are not eligible are available to take courses at their site.
Okay. The next question I have is under special programs, again, 1520-511200, salaries ESL teachers. That's a 98% increase.
I know we had the ads, we had the ads. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Our employee counts are placeholders for right now. When we print the last one, there will be adjusted numbers. We cannot do employee counts as of July 1st because we're still hiring people. Last year, we had nine people in the program, but the salaries ended up being funded in a grant. So that's why it shows nine because this is from the end of last year. So we actually didn't have nine last year, but we're gonna have nine this year, possibly unless a grant funds them. So it could be adjusted down in revisions.
And what happens sometimes for us, the grants, as you know, pay initially and then the services are, have to be picked up by the school system general fund.
But we're gonna double this year?
We don't think we'll double, but the number is there in case we have to.
Because that's, that's almost double. That's from 712 all the way to 1,404. Big difference.
And we did have an increase in our ESL population historically through the years.
Any idea what that population increase was?
This year, we're servicing 838 students. 838 students this year.
Continuing to grow.
Versus what? What number last year?
About, about 600 last year.
But that's still, that's a double the budget.
Well, as Terry just mentioned, that's a placeholder. We will have an accurate number and we'll adjust the budget to that.
When would you have that accurate number?
The next time, we're getting the counts and then the next time we'll be giving the budget will be what? With the solid numbers.
It's when we print the final, we use the adjusted numbers, the not, the doll, the employee counts. The dollar numbers are a projection in case the grants don't cover. We actually had nine employees, but probably half of them were covered by half, half, half of the salaries covered in a grant. So it's showing nine, but it probably should be 4.5, but I don't show half employees. So that's why it looks that way.
But what's the cost? What's the cost for last year versus this year?
It's in the book.
I mean, I'm seeing a 712,000 dollar number?
That's correct.
And I'm seeing a 1,404. Which one does it cost? If the grant doesn't cover it, what are we covering?
The 1.4 would be the number if no grants came into play as of this point in time.
So again, that is a 98% increase.
Correct. For the reasons we just stated.
For approximately 238 new students is what you're telling me?
Which are required by law to service, correct?
Just asking for the numbers. Just asking for the numbers.
Could I clarify something too?
Sure.
It may include some of the students from last year too because we don't have the grant money to cover those salaries with the original students from the prior year, then we'd have to put it all in general fund.
The next one was the pre-kindergarten supervisor, an 88% increase.
Dr. Sanford?
Why is that an 88% increase? Terry?
We had half her salary in a grant last year. Again, not sure about grant funding when I did the budget, so the full salary's there.
If it does, does get covered by the grant, then it would come out.
It will drop.
Okay, so when do, when do we find out about all these grants?
Why don't you talk the timeline of the whole thing and how, and many of these questions, I'm sorry, I mean, I would certainly be glad to meet with any of y'all to answer any question. I think you got the book yesterday, so I mean, I'm certainly open to working the whole process with you. Talk about the different times when we do the revisions and when the numbers are set in place.
Well, my question was is, when do you know about the grants?
Throughout the year.
Throughout the year, it's ongoing.
It varies. We don't control...
Okay, so these numbers here are not real numbers is what you're telling me?
They're real numbers, they're estimates, as she said, a placeholder number and as the year goes on, like you can look at last year's final budget, those are the final numbers.
So these are projected if you do not get the grants?
The grants, correct. Yes, ma'am. Because whether we get the grant or not, we have to provide the services.
Travel, 504. What is that?
The 504 coordinator has to service all of our schools and these are at-risk students needing, needing services, so that particular coordinator has to go and attend 504 meetings throughout the district.
And they're paid for their expenses, their travel expenses.
Okay, then the next one is going to be 2145-561000, which is instructional, instructional materials, people appraisals. That one has a 57% increase.
Terry?
We added four copiers to that budget in buildings, so that's a significant cost. That's 12 months of a copier cost plus any overages and copiers.
That's rental or purchase?
Those are rentals.
Under general administration, advertising, I was kinda surprised to see a large figure on advertising. Can you tell me what the school board would advertise for?
Go ahead.
Bids, employment, we're required to advertise bids, we're required to advertise the budget, all kinds of advertising.
Mr. Jabby, HR, y'all advertise as well?
All positions as required by the board, any position over a nine-month position, we must advertise for a 15-day period. Those goes in the newspapers. If you check the newspapers, those are not cheap.
Journals too, periodicals and educational journals.
Special education.
Special ed journals.
We do journals, yes, sir.
To try to get the best person for the job.
Correct.
Okay, and the next one is $50,000 travel for school board members.
That's travel for school board members. They go to conferences.
We go to that many conferences to have $50,000 worth of travel just for school board members in a year?
I believe it was about $35,000 last year, maybe a little less. I don't have the actual number, we haven't closed out the year yet, but that's the number. It's basically a placeholder, but it's usually way below that.
Yes, it would be.
Postage, $142,000 in postage? Is that really what we spend in postage?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We mail port cards, all kinds of mailings. We have to do reports, letters, different things.
Checks. Ms. Cindy, we have 38,000 kids and 6,000 employees and service 27,000 homes. We are by far the biggest business in St. Tammany Parish and that's the cost of doing business.
And we have a thousand...
And the first time I don't keep parents informed, this room will be packed with people that are staying.
I'm just asking.
Oh, I know, and I'm just, I'm just telling that you asked if we have that much posters and we do.
Okay. Computer technology, travel of $35,000 for travel?
That's to cover the computer technicians moving between the schools as reimbursement for their mileage.
We have computer technicians, we have high-tech technology in every school, as you know.
How many technicians do we have?
Technicians?
13.
And all 13 of them travel to the schools?
We have 55 schools and we only have 13 technicians.
I understand, but can they drive, they go to each and every one of these schools?
Yes.
Yes.
That's much less expensive than hiring additional technicians.
Land acquisition cost of 525,000. I've looked at the different budgets over the last several years, the final budgets and so forth, and I know that the school board already has a lot of assets and a lot of land. What other acquisitions would we...
We're always looking to buy land that's close and convenient to what we have. As you might know, we're continuing to grow, probably 250, 300 students. We have schools right now that are way past capacity, so if a piece of property comes up that's convenient to the property that we own, we certainly would want to buy it. Take, for example, in Madisonville, right now, we're dealing with huge traffic issues because we can't get another piece of land in Lancaster. Madisonville Elementary School, we just bought a piece of land that a house was on, hoping to, to get some space there to get the kids that are too much in one classroom. So it's opportunities for land that comes available. And just for you know, the policy is in our practice, we can only pay the average of two appraisals, so we never pay more than the average of two appraisals, so property is appraised and we're paid according to that.
But that was one of my latest questions that I must have missed was about the cost of appraisals. It's pretty high. Because I'd love to be your appraiser if that...
Well, you can bid for.
You're spending that money on appraisal.
You can bid for. You certainly can bid for. You get appraisals on the houses you sell, right?
Not to the tune of those kind of costs.
That's the same.
Not exactly, not exactly. Rental of buildings, so we're renting buildings even with all that we own?
Not anymore.
Because I see the, it's budgeted for 145,000, it was reduced?
One left. Which one?
Operation Jump Start.
Operation Jump Start is our only building. You know where that is on the campus of Southeast Hospital?
Uh-huh.
We're down to, that's our last building. We canceled our last lease that we had that was been signed for quite some time ago and we have not renewed any leases for, since I've been superintendent.
Okay. All right. Security coordinators. I was curious about that because I see a combination here with security officers, school resource officers, and security services, which is a really big chunk. I know that the voters voted in a bond specifically for school safety.
Right, and that's part of it.
So who, who's a security coordinator? Where does that come from when you've got two security officers, a security coordinator, and then a whole nother budget for the actual resource officers?
Yeah, we have a security coordinator that works here in our office that coordinates with law enforcement any issues that we may have. He's a retired covenant police officer and he's very knowledgeable of what needs to be done in different cases and we have a good relationship with all of our law enforcement. The school resource officers are based at our two alternative sites, one at Project Team East and one at Project Team West. And the other ones are school resource officers that we have in our high schools and a couple of our junior high schools. We feel that they provide a great service for our students and our community by being at those sites.
They do, but how many, how many resource officers do we have?
In the schools? We have one at every high school.
In the budget? How many are in this budget here? I see, because you've got secure, two security officers according to the budget.
We have security officers.
Which that's separate from, but that's separate from the resource officers.
The security, the two security officers are the two that are, one is at Project Team East and one is at Project Team West. The one security coordinator is housed here in our office.
Okay.
And then SROs at each high school and a couple junior highs?
Yes.
So the 843,000 is what we pay to resource officers?
Law enforcement. We pay that to law enforcement, yes, ma'am, to the different agencies. We have agreements with the sheriff's office, Slottell, Pearl River, and Mandeville.
Okay.
And what we normally do is pay nine-twelves, ten-twelves of the salary and then the local agency picks up the other two months when they're not working for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you, Sharon. Mr. Franz, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Foles, and good evening, school board. Thank you for your time. We had a, it was a bad accident coming on I-12.
Yeah.
It just kind of delayed me, a serious accident, actually. I first want to, I really just wanted to address one topic that I found actually very...
Introduce yourself.
My name's Rick Franz, I'm president and concern at St. Tammany. I live in Lecombe, Louisiana.
Okay, thank you.
Yesterday, we received a copy of the proposed budget for the school board and again, was a quick overview to look at it. One of the things that stuck out quickly to me was the, which I thought was great, was the salary of internal auditor. And I didn't know you actually had that in place and I just want to say on behalf of CCST, I think this is a great move and, and I'm gonna ask some questions and kind of walk through a process because I think this is something that we can maybe emulate in other entities throughout St. Tammany Parish. So just bear with me as I ask you some questions. Okay, first off, I just wanted to know what brought you to the decision to hire an auditor? Is it an auditor or is it an auditor firm that you have?
No, it's the internal auditor's employer of our school system.
So it's an individual you have employed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was actually the reason you went in that direction?
We had one a few years ago and then we had not replaced that person and we're doing it internally as well. And I think it was just an opportunity for us, you know, whenever we do our external audit and we deal with as much money as we use as a school system, that to have an opportunity for someone, you know, as you know, I sat on that inspector general task force, that kind of got my head spinning with that as well. So I think the opportunity was there, it was certainly well-received by our board and I think it's just another way to be transparent and make sure that we're spending money.
Well, I think it's commendable and I think it's a great step forward for the school board, but personally, I'd like to see something like this in place in a lot of different agencies and respective governments in St. Tammany Parish.
Thank you.
My next question would be, how long have you had this internal auditor? I'm getting from the budget, it looks like about a year, is that correct?
Less than that.
Less than a year?
Huh?
She was hired in May.
May.
Oh, it's the lady, okay.
Yes, sir. And we had, we had many applicants and had a good, good crowd of people.
Can I ask you her name, just?
Sure.
Melissa, Melissa Tease. She's a CPA and a CIA.
Okay, great.
And she answers directly to the, to me?
She is, not to the school board, she does directly to you.
And the board, but not anyone else.
That was one of my questions.
No, not anyone, no other staff members, directly to me and the board.
Okay, I got you. That's kind of was asking, how and whom is decided? Okay, who actually decides on the work the auditor will be performing for the school?
There's a charter that we're working on together and meeting with. I mean, we're in the very beginning processes of it and there's a charter of responsibilities that have come through her agency and different, that we're tasked off with that. I've also met with our external auditors.
Right.
I've also have a plan in place to meet with the legislative auditor.
You're saying you're working with the legislative auditors in this as well? Great.
Yeah, so just to make sure we, I think it's better to go slow and do it right than put something together that's not gonna benefit us.
No, that makes sense and I agree with you. And you know, we work closely with the LLA and I know Darryl Pupora personally.
Right.
And I have a lot of respect for that agency and I think they could add a lot of good to all, all different governmental agencies in St. Tammany Parish. Since the employment of this auditor has been completed, has there been any completed assigned projects so far to date since you've hired her?
Yes, sir, there's been, whenever we have a principal retire, we do go ahead and do an audit from that, so that's probably the only ones we've done so far.
Okay.
She's also done workshops and spoke to our principal administrators conference and shared some guidelines and has helped work with Terry and I in putting guidelines in place.
When the, I'm trying to understand the process, because to be honest with you, I'm gonna use this process in, in other discussions. And once this process is done and she, this lady makes her recommendations or advice to, to you and I guess then to the board, or does it come to you direct?
Concurrently at the same time.
Okay. What happens then, what happens at that point in time when she makes a recommendation on, on an audit?
It would be, it would be taken, it would, her recommendation would be followed.
And then you would make adjustments accordingly?
Sure.
Does that have to be approved by the board or is it something you just implement yourself?
It's the board.
Okay. Is there on the board itself, is there any, like, is there a committee that works directly with the auditor or is it just strictly works with the administrative yourself and then goes to the board?
At this time, it's the board, myself and the board officers.
Okay. Now, on the other question, as we go forward, if CCST wanted to look at any of these reports once they actually happen, is there something we would do through public records requests or something we just call and say, can we get a copy of what?
Either way, public records requests.
Okay, okay. And I guess that's really, I'm just kind of excited about this, this move and I think it's great and again, on behalf of CCST, I think that's a great move and I'm glad to see you guys doing it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Restor?
I forgot one question that I had. I noticed when I was going through the budget, the different areas, the raises, or I should say increases, they seem to be slight and in your budget message tonight, you say something about raises. Is it raises or stipends for teachers, I guess?
Oh, yeah, it's a stipend, but it's also increase in their salary. But Pete, Mr. Jabby can explain.
It's an increase in their salary, the stipend is a one-time, it's not built into their base, so it's not a recurring expense. It'll be a one-time expense.
And I know in the past, I know in the past y'all have done stipends, like I think last year was $500 one time or something?
That's, that's for effectiveness, that's, that's for highly effective. We did a stipend, we've done that two years in a row. That's been a one-time check for those teachers who were rated highly effective.
And what is this year's?
That has not been approved by the board yet.
The recommendation tonight is...
Well, the recommendation, right.
The recommendation is the same thing, is the $500 for the highly effective. The recommendation is the same thing, is the 500 dollars for the highly effective, 775 dollars for experience pay, and 275 dollars for an advanced degree.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Reston.
Anyone else? All right, we'd like to thank you all for attending tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.